This conference will now be recorded.
I call to order the Coopville Town Council meeting of July 23, 2024, and invite you all to say I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the disson with liberty and justice for all. Okay, does anybody have any changes?
We need to excuse our people that are not here, right?
Oh, right. Well?
Well, Mike.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah. I would move to excuse Councilwoman Mike Moore for being late.
Second.
Moved and seconded to excuse Mike Moore. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposed. Passes unanimously. I'm waiting to see if she comes up. Any changes to the agenda that the council has? Okay, so the agenda will be approved as submitted. Tonight, we have minutes from the July 9 meeting. Did anybody have any questions on those? Pretty short meeting, short minutes. Good job, Chris. Okay, the minutes will stand approved as submitted. Mayor's report. I met with the Economic Development Committee of Coopville and Storage Waterfront Association. I'm on that committee, like I do every month. And we talked about broadband and cell phone service and bathrooms, like we do every month. We are, I, we are, if you're okay with this, I don't like it, but I finally succumbed to it. Choua wants to put two porta potties downtown somewhere for, I don't know for how long. I didn't confirm that with them. I don't really know that we want them there all year long, but for the rest of the summer. They want to do ADA accessible one. Originally, they wanted to do an ADA accessible and then a regular one, then they changed their mind to two ADAs, which are much bigger. So I have to call them and work out the details. But I did spend some time this morning downtown with Jesse and Tony. We were going to put them behind the chamber building, but I think we have a better spot for them. I was talking to the museum about this. It's just as a courtesy, it's our property. But I think we're going to put them down, you know, north of the museum. You know, we're Front Street. Technically, it's not a street, but it's a trail up to the heart. Because, and I didn't want to put them there. At first, they talked to me about putting them by the wharf. And I'm like, no, I don't want them in all the pictures of the wharf and everything for the summer. But we can stick them down a little bit further. There's quite a high, there's quite high vegetation from the museum. It's a really nice flat spot. And I asked the guys to build lattice around the back of it, which will face the museum and the sides of it. So that like when you're walking down Front Street, you're not looking at the side of a green porta potty.
Nice.
So kind of camouflage them a little bit. And we looked at two or three spaces in the rec hall parking lot, and it's just so close to the chamber. It's so close to that apartment above the chamber. They're just, no matter how well they're cleaned, they don't smell good. So down by the museum, by the waterfront, no buildings around it. And I think we can camouflage them. You guys all right with that? Okay. Choua is going to pay for them, and they're going to pay to have them cleaned three times a week.
Okay. So I have a question. Are they going to be far enough to act? They always have a big disson with those people. Arts and Crafts Festival, right there, that has to collect yourself on that corner.
Ooh.
You know, they, I mean, that guy had those great big ceramic things right there.
Yeah, but he's not, he's not ever in the right way. He's on the street still.
I think so. Yeah, I just.
Okay, but we will, we will, we'll double check with the, we'll let the Arts and Crafts Festival know. And we may or may not lock theirs during the festival. The arts and crafts people put stuff out, porta potties everywhere. And, and they're always clean the two days each day, and then they're picked up and they're gone. So we may want to talk about locking those too during the festival? Because if they get dirty, they're, that's on a different company, so they wouldn't be cleaned right away.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then I'm also setting up a meeting with the, with the Choua people that are interested in, which is this committee that I'm on, constantly talking about broadband fiber and wireless service and cell coverage and stuff down in that area. So the town is working with Zipley to possibly convert all of our stuff over to Zipley. And so I'm setting up a meeting with the Choua people to talk to our Zipley people, and I'll be in the meeting. So they can explain what their issues are and if, by that of Zipley thinks they can fix that. If they can, depending on what cost, because it will all be centered around the rec hall. We may pay for it, or they may contribute, or the Arts and Crafts Festival has taken some money to solve this problem. So I'll report back on that. Okay. I attended Alliance Burr Burn, which we celebrated another excellent garage sale, and we announced our take, and it was...
Forty-three thousand.
Wow. Forty-three thousand. Excellent year, excellent year under Chairman Rick Waltke.
President.
President. Well, and also Chairman of the Garage Sale. Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Was Mr. Bannister?
Yes, he worked, he worked his hand all rip. Yeah. And that money will all go back out into our community.
Very.
Okay. We can, Karen and I conducted four interviews last week to fill our open utility clerk. Promoted Lisa up to Assistant Planner. And I'm very happy to say we hired a person. Her name is Kayden Stiltner. She lives down in... Where's she live?
Twenlagoon, near.
Definitely. Oh, is that where she lives? Oh, I thought she lived south. She lives there. Wow. That's great. She's only lived on the island since May, but she's been with us for one week today. And she's great. She, she seems to fit in with the team. She's a quick learner, and she's the, and, and, you know, and I told you before, we're really lucky because Lisa's still in the building. So Lisa's doing a lot of her training. Chris is training with her. And if she asks questions, Lisa's right there. And she's starting at an interesting time. We did water shut offs today.
No, that was the day she started. That was last week.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, they were taking more water shut offs today.
No, they were doing meter reads today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for the new bill.
Did she see the water shut offs last week? Wow. Okay, so she started a great time, because you know, this stuff only happens every two months. So Lisa can help her and do this stuff with her, but when the meter reads come in, then it'll be the first billing. So she's getting trained quickly. But we're excited about it.
So we're fully set up?
Fully, yes, again. Fully set up, yeah.
And the crowd goes wild.
Yes, the crowd does go wild. I told you.
That's true, Chris, right?
I told you guys that I was about that ceremony for the ping pong table. So it is installed. I don't know if you guys have stopped by and looked at it, but the ceremony was really fun. It was really, I made this, I made a proclamation and read it, and her daughter had brought food and snacks and, and she had invited all of Evelyn's friends, and it was a big group of impressive people. Evelyn had some good friends. And so they initiated, Linda Austin played the first ping pong game on the table. And it was, it was a fun event.
So somebody asked me, do you bring your own pellets and bottles?
She, she has, there's a little red mailbox on a pole there. And Barbara put in four paddles and a bunch of balls. So it will be an experiment to see if they stay there. Yeah. We'll see how it goes.
I call it a pick-up ball court procedures.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Okay, I attended the last quarterly NET meeting with Jackie. You weren't there, right?
I was at that meeting.
Okay.
He was not there.
It was last week in the rec hall. And it was just kind of a, kind of a sense where we, I told you, we had hired a new coordinator, and he's not here yet. He's, he's on this long trip. He'll be back at the end of this month. So they just used their regularly scheduled quarter meetings just to have an update on things like, we, well, I talked about the new coordinator and said what he was all about, his background. We talked about our co-ed program, gave an update on that, which is community organizations, active, yeah, disaster. So that's that list I really wanted them to get together of people outside of NET that have resources they could provide, like food, or shelter, or heaters, or things like that during a, during an emergency. So they're working on that. Map Your Neighborhood, they're working on that. And that is not, that program's not going as fast as I thought it would, but people that have done it really like it. You meet your neighbors in small groups, and you plan for a disaster together in your small core group. And then we also talked about five important volunteer positions that are open right now. One is, one of our three big centers, the Volunteer Registration Center. No, 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 Comfort, the Comfort Information Center, is without a director right now. And that's the place where people would go to get food, or to get warm, or to get questions answered, to charge their phones, to meet their neighbors. It's a checking point if someone's looking for you. So I'm really hoping they can find, they can convince someone that's a volunteer at that center to step up to be the new director. So they're working on that. We're down two neighborhood captains right now. We would like a new editor for the website. And they would like another map your neighborhood. A person right now, Bonnie Avney, is the one that has that program and knows how to give it at homes. Which you can do it, the captain can do it himself, but so far, they've been asking Bonnie to come in and do it. So she'd like a second person trained in that. So it was a good meeting. Short, low meeting. It was good. Touch a Truck was a huge success. I did, this is the first year I did not get down to it, but everybody raved about it. I've got several good pictures about it. And the Navy helicopter did land in the green.
I drove by a couple of times. I couldn't find a place to park, but holy cow, a lot of people there. I was going to go, but I couldn't, but there was no place.
Yeah.
Oh, man. Should have gotten the green for parking for that.
I can, I can talk to Sherry about it for next year.
About opening a green for parking?
Putting a part of it for parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Because there were cars, I mean.
Especially if they have a Navy helicopter gang, because I think that drew a lot of people.
I was waiting for somebody to park.
Oh, shoot.
It was amazing.
So all, like on the streets and stuff, along the side streets? Oh, shoot. Okay, so would you put that in your notes for next year? They'll have to block it off if the helicopter comes in again. But yes, we can do that. Shoot.
But they're sure, I mean, like a lot of kids that were having a lot of fun.
So from our crew, Jimmy, Alex, Nathan, and Heidi were all there. And they had the sweeper, the sidearm, the duck truck, and a gator. And Deputy Davidson was there with the Coopville Marshall's car. So everybody does great.
Somebody got a cherry picker there, too, and saw that kind of throwing up and down.
PSC usually brings that.
Yeah, and my big trucks, you know, so I definitely wanted.
They had kids in it?
I think so. I mean, I was looking from a distance, but, I mean, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, they have fire trucks and, last year, they had the sheriff's boat. I don't know if that was there this year. So another great event.
Yeah.
Last week, we had the open house, the kickoff meeting, the public kickoff meeting in the rec hall. Remember last, I don't know, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And Joshua and the consultants were all there, and they had done so much prep work, and it was so, it was laid out so great. And virtually eight people showed up.
I went in the afternoon.
Did you? Okay.
And there was, two people, Josh and I talked for probably a half hour, and then two people did come in, and so I left. But, you know, I was hoping other people would go, well, we did it. People can't say we didn't do it.
Absolutely. So Joshua's in there by himself from 1:00 to 6:00, so people could come in. I mean, he made it all hours and made it as easy, you know, as easy as people could. And then the consultants did a, did a PowerPoint at 6:00, and it was really good. I asked Joshua if maybe he would consider coming and showing that presentation to the council, or at least sending on the PowerPoint slides. It was, it was short, but very complete, told everything that we need to do this year on this, on this update. It was a really nice update. And then there was, and then there was probably, you know, maybe six or eight people that showed up. They watched that, and then they stayed and asked some questions. And Joshua is great. I mean, I said, oh, man, I'm sorry I did all this work, and hardly anybody came. And he goes, yeah, but the ones that came had good questions, and, you know, anybody I can talk to is better than nothing. So he did a really good job.
It was really nicely laid out.
It was.
Easy to understand.
Yes. And you could go to the area that you were interested in if it was only one thing. He had big maps of the, of the town made and had them set up on like, sitting on five different tables. And one was for parking rec, and one was for housing, and one was for, you know, so he had like five different topics that we have to do. And for each table, he had information sheets made for that topic. And then he also had a survey, a two-question survey, that was different on every table. Yeah.
And then he just had blank papers. People couldn't write comments or...
And sticky notes that people could write on the map and make their comments on that. Yeah.
He did a very nice job.
Yes. I wish, I sure wish more people would have come. But, so, let's support him in next week, or in August, next month, on August 17. I guess I'm not, I guess I wasn't announcing this, because we'll have one meeting since then, but, yeah, maybe. On August 17 will be another public meeting in the rec hall. And this one will be to kick off and talk about the coastal adaptation study. That is going to be, the results will be, will go along with, you know, we've got the shoreline.
It's a Saturday.
Oh, that's a Saturday?
I know, when you sent that in to us.
Okay, I'm going to have to, don't then just erase that. I'll send that out to you, because it will happen pretty closely after our, it's three weeks till our next meeting. So I think it will happen the right before, right after. I'll send that date out to you. But anyway, that'll be interesting. I think a few more people will show up for that one, because there's more people interested in that specific topic. So I'll let you know when that is. Okay, today, this is my last thing. Today, all day, from noon, from noon till 1:00 I came to this meeting, I have been at a special day of EV's reserve meetings. So we had the partners, the four partners, which are me representing the town, Melanie Bacon representing the county, Heath Yates representing State Parks, and Randy LeBasser representing NPS. We're the partners, separate from the trust board. We had had a virtual meeting last, last month, after all the bad press and stuff, and kind of decided, hey, guys, we gotta, we gotta jump in here and help. And so it was actually, I said, we need to go, the friends are beaten up, and the trust board is beaten up. We have to, we have to support them. And that's when we wrote that letter to the newspaper. I don't know if you guys all saw it. It was a kind of sound-off thing, saying that we all, you know, committed to the work of the reserve, have confidence in the trust board, appreciate your friends, and just trying to put a good, good news out there about the trust board, because there hadn't been any. And it was Randy LeBasser from NPS. I said, we need to, we need to show support. I think we need to be at their meetings and maybe have a, Randy, you can come in virtually. And Randy said, no, no, this is important. I'll come, I'll come. And Randy is the regional deputy for NPS. He, his parks, he's got 30 parks he's in charge of. Half of them are on fire today, so he did not make it. He did not come. But he was the one that lives the furthest away and wanted, thought it was important to come in person. So, and it is. That would have been great. And so we set up, I talked to friends. They hosted us, they hosted lunch for the partners at a barn, at a property on Zilstra that's received three events of, you know, EV's Forever grants. So we could meet in the barn and show the work that was done. So none of the three, Melanie, me, or Heath had not seen that work, so that was good. And so we had the lunch, and there was no virtual connection. So it was a really nice lunch. It was really good. We talked about, had some ideas of how the partners and the trust board can support friends and help them. They feel really, that their reputation has been slammed so badly. They're really hurt. You know, they raised $110,000 for the reserve, and they're being criticized this year alone. So I think we, I think they were happy that we came, and we got some good, fun ideas of things we could do to support them. And then we were going to have the partners' meeting, just hang out for an hour in the barn before the trust board meeting. But so we rushed, I had, I asked Carol to set up for the trust board meeting early in the, in the library room. And so the, us three partners went back to the library, and Randy was on virtual. So we had an hour-long meeting there, and we told them about some of the ideas for, for supporting friends and stuff. And then Randy came in virtually and stayed for the whole two-hour trust board meeting.
Wow.
So it was really fun to watch the trust board. They're a great group. Linda is, Linda Austin, our town representative, is the new chair. She does a great job running a meeting. She's really good.
She just jumped in, became chair immediately.
Well, she was, yeah, she was kind of like, no one else would do it. I don't know. She's comfortable running a meeting. And so that's really good, because everything will be done by the book, and, and it just makes everybody else more relaxed. There's not a lot of questions during the major, meeting about procedures. Are we doing this right? Yeah. So it was a really nice meeting. So we just kind of sat through their regular meeting, and a portion of the meeting is partner reports. And so I give it for the town, and so we just did those regular, but usually, they're not partner reports. Well, they kind of are, but usually, I do the towns, Melanie does the counties, but the trust board rep from State Parks does it, and the trust board rep from NPS does it. So the same four people did it, and then on new business, we were given pretty much as much time as we wanted to talk to the trust board. Everybody got to meet Randy online. Most of the trust board had, didn't know him. And he's a really, he's a really good speaker, and he said a lot of great things to them. And again, it was just kind of like, how, how can we support you? And the trust board came up with very specific things that we could do to, to support them. So I think it'll be important as partners that we try to get some of this stuff done as soon as possible. And one of the things the trust board wants is training for, like, not open public meetings. They're taking that virtually, but they want like a, like, remember Jurassic? What was the name of that stupid meeting, that good program?
Giraffe Program?
Jurassic. Instead of Jurassic Park, it's Jurassic Parliamentary or something. It's a goofy. It's a goofy name, and it has some goofy, but the woman that runs it knows Robert's Rules of Order perfectly. And she, like, the goofiness kind of makes you remember things, you know, better? Yeah. She hasn't been up here forever, and...
It's Jurassic Parliament.
It's a Jurassic Parliament, yeah. So when the county and the town have done trainings like this in open public meetings, or, or Robert's Rules of Order, or whatever, we let each other know, and we invite each other's planning commissions and the volunteer boards. And so Melanie's up for that again, because we haven't done it for a long time. So I think we need to, does a sandwich your coffee?
I haven't closed it.
Oh, you close, that's okay.
I'm having summer special. I did catch that.
Summer special?
Yeah.
So we might be, I might be asking you to pay for some training. There's a question on their computer equipment. The last reserve manager gave all the computer equipment back to NPS, and everybody's been using, having to use their own personal computers. Don't ask. So they need to have, they need to have reserve computers with storage and firewalls and a place to keep all of their reserve records, right? So we might be talking about that. NPS might jump in for that. They lost their NPS, their NPS females were given away. Randy says we can get those back, so that's important to them, because then they have, then Carol has access to certain NPS stuff that the public doesn't have, like training and resources and chances for reporting. So that'll be good. So they were really interested in training and onboarding. I'm going to talk to Linda about that. We could help with printing of that kind of stuff. So anything we can think of. I don't think it'll be expensive, but I do think they're going to come and ask for an increase in their budgeted amount. So I'll talk to them about it, see what they're thinking about, and we'll talk about that in Budget Workshop, okay?
Well, I've been searching for a new director. What's going on in there?
Well, you know, this just, this just happened, that she left again, so.
I just wondered what they're saying.
So they formed a committee. They have formed a search committee. And there's four of them on it, which is on my trust board packet in the car. There's four trust boards on it. And so it's just been formed, and they're going to meet and talk about plan. Yeah, so that, that is a top priority for them. Okay, so that's it. Just a reminder, since it'll be three weeks, so our next meeting, which will be August 13. And then, so before our next meeting, the Coopville Arts and Crafts Festival will happen. In Coop on August 10. And it is, if you didn't notice, their 16th anniversary. So if you've seen their art, it's like 60s, groovy, psychedelic. That's why, that's why their art this year looks like that. I think it's really cute, with their, with their seagull, of course. Right. With the seagull. So I know you probably all will go to that and enjoy it. So any questions on my mayor's report? Nope. Okay. Audience input. Do we have anybody online, Chris?
We have one person online.
Oh, so Lisa?
Yeah.
Lisa, I assume you don't have any public input?
Yeah, I know.
All right, thank you. Okay, now on to new business. So we've gotten three donations, which you've seen. We're supposed to accept them by resolution. I said to Nikki, can I throw these all on one? She said, no, you really should do three. So they're very similar. So the first one is Resolution 2407. Oh, wait, no, no. Resolution, okay, never mind, never mind the donations. Our first thing is Resolution 2407, which we do every year, which is called a de minimis letter from the reserve, which says, our chip seal work, this year it's only chip seal, our chip seal work will not cause, will not have any effect on the roads in Coopville, which some of them are historic. So we get this, we put it in our file, just to cover ourselves. And mainly, you know, the historic people want to know if we're changing the width of our roads, the depth of our roads, or direction of our roads, and of course, on asphalt overlays and chip seal, we don't do that. Did I touch the letter? I don't think I did, did I? So this year, we got, I put this request in for the reserve manager, but then it didn't get signed. So now I had a letter from the chair sign. I didn't, I didn't attach it. Yeah, it's the same thing. It says, I basically combined them with the tablet.
I moved and seconded to approve Resolution 24 National 7, testing the 2024 chip seal program. It will have a de minimis effect on our students in Coopville.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2407. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, now, the next three items are Ordinance 793, accepting the ping pong table that we've talked about quite a bit, from Barbara Ireland. Ordinance 794 is accepting the, oh, the donation of office equipment and furniture from Harmson. We, guys, we, we hit a goldmine when Harmson decided to close their office in Oak Harbor. We've gotten two, we've got two fireproof safes, which I think we actually had in the budget to buy this year. We've got several other file cabinets. We've got a lot of the low, they're called flat files, that you put blueprints in. We got several of those. We got a scanner printer for blueprints. So that means Lucky Little Chris, or someone else, will be able to start, start scanning blueprints so that we can put them, just put a PDF in the, in the address file. The address files for every, for every address and every project that we have before. Right now, it's like, you just, it's just, you're just lucky if you can find the blueprint that you need. We got a regular, oh, we got three desks, so we can, so we can set Chris up a workstation in the archives. And, and we also got a little printer, like a desk printer, that will either stay in the archives or go somewhere else. Jimmy needs a desk at the water treatment plant, and we don't know where the third one will go if we need it, but that's, I think that's about it. Really exciting. Really, the file cabinets all have keys.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, it was really nice to get all that stuff.
Like Christmas.
It was like Christmas. And Michael, who works at Harmson, who we work with, he gave a lot of stuff to us. He asked the county if they wanted anything, so he, they were just getting rid of every single thing in that office. Yeah. And then the last one is Ordinance 795. We got a $2,000 donation from them. I don't know if you guys knew that? Because they think that the town park needed a water fountain, a drinking fountain. And they wanted to have it be human-friendly, pet-friendly, and water bottle-friendly. And, so they gave us two...
So we're excited about that.
They gave us $2,000, but, you know, they cost $4,000, so we thought that was a good deal. 50% donation. So we bought it. We have it. If we could stop having sewer and water line breaks, the guys will install it. They know exactly where it's going to be installed. They're excited about it. That'll probably be done in the next couple of weeks, I would guess.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
I'll start at the top.
Okay.
I move to offer as the mayor to sign Ordinance 793, accepting a donation of an outdoor ping pong table from Barbara Ireland.
Can I second it? Any more questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, I will make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign ordinance 794, accepting a donation of office furniture and equipment from Harmson L. L. C.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve ordinance 794. Any questions or comments or? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I would like to recommend a motion to authorize the mayor to sign ordinance 795, accepting a donation of $2,000 from Coopul Land Club for the purchase of a drinking water fountain for the town park.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve ordinance 795. Any comments or questions? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we usually don't have staff reports at this meeting, but we didn't get, we didn't get Bo's last time, in time for the first pack of the month. So his report isn't here.
I did have a comment on his that.
Okay.
You know, we talked last, we, or the last meeting about banning those big mortar fireworks. And you just seen his report that the county is going to ban them starting in 2025. So we might, will do the same. I know we have to wait a year, but.
Well, we could do it now and. It'd have to be done before the 4th of July. You still have to wait a year.
Yeah.
So it'd have to be done before the 4th of July.
Well, we could still do it and then whenever.
Okay, and, yeah. I'm fine with that because our, we have a big miss in our firework code. It does not say, I've been telling people this forever, but it doesn't say it in our code, that they are not allowed to shoot fireworks off on public property. Like the park, the boat launch. So that should really be added, yeah. Okay.
So we've got some time to look into that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that.
Okay.
Put it on its own list. Put it on the list.
Is there anything in the code that talks about cleanup?
Uh, no, I don't know, but we can add it.
I would. I was driving through the morning after. It was a little disappointing.
Really, like on the streets and stuff?
Had it not been cleaned up, and it did get, at some point in the day, I was going to go out there with my bushbroom. Because the church parking lot was, the community church parking lot was locked and braved. So somebody did eventually come and make it up. But I just, I was wondering if there was anything in there about responsibility for it, not there themselves. And I didn't know what it looked like, kind of the boat launch, anything. But that's not an app.
Okay, so no mortars, no public spaces, and cleanup. Well, we're, I'll bring the code in and we'll look at it.
Okay.
Here's enough, that'll, that'll be easy, a quick one to do.
Yeah.
Okay, no more questions on the marshal's report? Okay, council reports? Jackie, do you have anything?
We have nothing.
Hey, Rick? Jenny?
I, just a mention of two island transit route changes. This already went into effect on July 7th, but the Route 6 that goes through the Coopul Ferry is back again. So that had gone away and it was on, on demand, online. But with the inconsistency in ferry and staffing and all of that kind of stuff, it made more sense for there to be a fixed route here there. So that's back again.
You mean the whole triangle route is back or just going to the ferry and back? Not the State Park route?
Not the State Park route. No, the State Park route, that actually went away on the 7th of July.
Okay.
And then there were some other changes to the Clinton commuter that, I, I would just recommend that people go on the website and look at Route 6 and Route 1 and some of those coming from the, you know, the commuter route. Just to make sure that there aren't any changes that impact them.
So I'm doing the town newsletter this week. You, should I put a little blurb in there about that?
Yeah, I can send you something over. I'm going to send some leave notes real quick just so that I can get, I was on the website and there's something I have a question about and then I'll send it to you.
Okay.
But yeah, I would just, I would definitely look at the routes and schedules because there are some changes.
Okay, I think it's a good way to do that, put the island transit website in and.
Yeah, I think it's good news that the Coopul Ferry is part of the fixed route again because it's just, because there's a two, there was a two hour requirement for requesting an on demand ride. If you were coming across from Port Townsend, you don't have two hours and then you're there. So we talked through that a lot and it made more sense. And then once we freed up the resources that were supporting eight hours a day for the state parks and that had very, very little usage, it made more sense to reinstate that one. So I'll send you the other details on the Clinton commuter.
Okay. Okay. Is that, is that it?
Yeah. I wanted to back up on staffing under the marshals.
Yes, yes.
It says here the sheriff or deputy, you asked to have somebody covered. They say it may or may not be possible. Does that mean we're only going to have one marshal for six weeks or for?
Oh, it's way longer than six weeks.
That's not.
Eight to 10 weeks.
Six to 10 weeks? Eight to 10 weeks.
Eight to 10 weeks.
Which may or may not be possible. So we only have one person in August when we have a.
No, you know, he's already been out for two, over two months before.
Yeah.
And, and it's.
With the brawl?
Yeah. And Bo did a really good job. Bo, it's a combination of Bo working a lot of overtime, Bo asking for overtime from other Island County sheriffs, which they're really low staffed on, so when they're working, it's a lot of overtime for them. Or only in a couple instances, I think this maybe happened three or four times in two months, there wasn't coverage in Coopul. And, but then they would notify North Patrol and South Patrol. And so Bo, one of them would, would respond to Coopul. Obviously, it's a longer response time. But I was actually pretty impressed with how many, that it was so few days we weren't covered with someone in town. So I'll talk to him about that and talk to Sheriff Leachy about that.
So we have a little state leave and all that kind of stuff?
Well, we, no, we pay a set, we don't pay overtime or, or anything like that. We pay a set contract. And so if Bo or Rob work overtime, if their guys come in and work overtime, we don't pay that. But, but trust me, we pay it, we pay a lot for our, for our contract. But, but, yeah, but we still.
Oh, and I did want to say a quick thank you to Joe and whoever on his team for cleaning up the questions around the 25 mile an hour side coming into Madrona.
Oh, good.
It's all completely visible.
Good, good.
Thank you for passing that on. Looks great. Doing a great job.
Okay, yep, they are right. Okay, so this discussion item, I just have an idea, just want to run it by you. I, it's been a long time since we've had, like, we used to do Coopul 101 sessions and we used to do kind of community education and community information sessions a little bit. Haven't, in that dropped off in COVID, obviously. And I've never gotten back to that. And I'm all of a sudden hearing, you know, the same topics over and over or new topics over and over. And I thought, yeah, we need to get back to that a little bit and then people that are interested. So what's come up a lot with the comp plan is when we talk about growth and housing, there hasn't been a single public meeting we've had where people haven't wanted to know, do we have the water for that? Do we have enough water for this much growth? Do we have, can our infrastructure handle it? And so that's a really good question. And the, the county has a new hydrologist. They were without a hydrologist for a while, but they have a new hydrologist. And he, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed, like, is it right now? Some other night that I had a meeting that I couldn't get out of. Janet St. Clair was doing a virtual town hall meeting with this, with this hydrologist. Did you see it?
No, I didn't know I saw that.
Okay, I really want, I really wanted to see it and, you know, see what his program was. But I would like to have him come and do a, a program for Coopul, specifically for Coopul. You know, we're right on top of it, on top of the aquifer and it's coming up a lot. And so I think people would be interested in that. Another thing is we haven't had any education other than my once a year deer flyer in the water, water thing, in the, I mean, in the newsletter. And I think I want to talk to the department, the Fish and Wildlife guys again. And maybe, well, I call them every year to see if there's anything new to do and there isn't. But he did, he, the last time I talked to him, he did say, well, we have, we have some new that we can talk about. I, I don't, so I'd like to maybe do a deer one again. Are there any other animals we're having a problem with in town? No, seriously? Reckons. Is there more reckons than normal?
We have a lot of that around us. We have a family of apes that are living below, the house below us. They're staring. And they're coming out in the daytime. They're, yeah, they, they are, they're very brave. I actually had to text Joe to come out of the house because I was in my little shed and one of them was on the deck sitting in front of the door. And I'm texting him and calling him, I'm like, please, because Rocky raccoon is upside my door.
Yeah, they, they're very brave, yeah. I haven't heard any problems, I haven't heard anything about feral cats for a while. Has it, have any of you guys heard of it? I don't think that's an issue anymore. And then the other one, and I'm not saying what order we'll do this in. I'm going to try and do the aquifer one first because while we're all talking about.
That's the one that I kept asking about. Time we had a meeting about that, where's the water we pour? There's never been anything, we can't hear anything, never said anything about water. I said, and how can they dictate how much help?
Yeah. Yeah.
I've talked about that every time.
It's a good question and I think a lot of people are interested in it. And then the other one is there's a fire safe program. I don't think that's the exact name for it. But there's a program that the Conservation District, it's a national program, but in our area, our, the Conservation District teaches it. And it's not just, you know, about wildfires that you think are going to be far, far away from you. They're how to make your property safe, fire safe. And, you know, prepare for a fire, what, you have a family plant, just all the normal stuff. But there's a lot of talk. Front Street's really worried about fire because of the Melly fire last year. It's on everybody's mind more.
We had such a little rain.
And they're talking more about recently, they're, like, I know the county is, I hear this in county meetings. There are, people are saying, emergency people are saying that they're going to come over. They're going to come over to the western side. They're not going to stay on, in eastern Washington, they're not going to stay in Canada. And so it's something that we all need to be aware of. So that's another program, I think, that people might find interesting.
You thinking about all in one night or like?
Oh, no, no. Okay. Yeah, like once a quarter. Once a quarter, yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Does, does anybody have an idea for the fourth one?
We could, we could have a year long program.
Any topic that keeps coming up?
Well, I mean, you, you all keep talking so much about the work you're doing at NAD. I'm going to be prepared in this, hopefully.
Emergency, just an emergency preparedness one?
Maybe do that last, if our new director kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Jeff.
Yeah, because I think a lot of people don't really know.
Oh, great.
Good idea.
Another thing that keeps, that, you know, since I've just been so many trust reserve meetings, it's coming back, I, I keep hearing it more and more, that people are moving here and they don't know about the reserve, they don't know they're in the reserve. When you have a lot of education and outreach going on, it's in the paper more, people go to classes, neighbors talk to neighbors and you understand it more. It might be interesting, once, once the new trust board gets a chance to catch their breath and maybe after they hire a reserve manager, it might be interesting just to do a night on the reserve. Which you could do, especially, oh, oh, it could be in conjunction with a kickoff or something or an announcement of the new design guidelines.
That'd be great.
That are supposed to be done by December. So maybe we could do this the first quarter of '24 or something, maybe?
Yeah, okay, great. That's a great idea because I think a lot of people don't know the whole history of that and how, how incredible that is.
And how unusual it is.
Yeah.
Man, we should ask Randy LaVassar to come. He was speaking virtually, but he was like, you guys just don't know how good you have it. You don't know how special you are. He goes, I've got 2,200, wait, he goes, 22,000 firefighters in the country right now fighting fires and getting injured. And when they need to ask their neighbors for help, they don't know who their neighbors are. He said, this is so special, the four partners, the trust board, the big area, the community supports it. And he just was like going on and on, it's like, wow. We're almost like all crying about how special we were and how unique it is.[1720.68]